Good evening, everyone. The time is 7:03 and I am calling this meeting into order. This meeting is being recorded. We'll do the invocation. Father God, we just give you the glory and we give you the honor. We just love you. We know that you're King of kings and you're Lord of lords. We know that you're Prince of peace, the bright and morning star. And Father God, we just ask that you be in our midst, Father. We know that you, Father, like things in decency and order. So we all, well, most of us are believers and we believe your word, Father God, which is true. And we believe you, which is truth. So Father God, we bind the hand of the enemy, confusion, distraction, sabotage, spiritual witchcraft, anger, and fighting. Father, and we lose peace and the truth. We lose your spirit and we lose your grace and your mercies that are new every morning. Father, we ask that you will bless all the attendees here, their families. We bless, we ask that you will bless the elected officials and, Father God, and the citizens of Glen Arden. And Father, we just extend our prayers to our neighbor in the city, Baltimore, a city where they have had their tragedy. We ask that you will bless those and the elected officials. In Jesus' name we pray, amen and amen.
Amen.
Council clerk, could you do the roll call, please?
Sure. Councilwoman Fareed let us know that she's not going to be available this evening. Councilwoman Guillaume?
Here.
Councilman Hairston?
Here.
Councilman Herring?
Here.
Councilwoman Jones?
Here.
Council Vice President Ferguson?
Here.
And Council President Curtis?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Council Clerk. A motion to adopt agenda?
So move.
A second? Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call to accept the agenda.
Councilwoman Guillaume?
Yes.
Councilman Hairston?
Yes.
Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Council Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
Council President Curtis?
Yes.
Vote carries.
Thank you. Okay, we have legislation R 472024, a resolution to issue building permits for construction for 14 townhomes on 14 lots in Glen Arden Hills redevelopment. Council Clerk?
R 47, the sponsor is Councilman Hairston and Councilman Herring. On behalf of the administration, the public hearing was held on March 21st and we're here in regular session, special regular session, excuse me. A resolution to issue building permits for the construction of 14 townhomes on 14 lots in the Glen Arden Hills redevelopment, whereas the council is required to approve permits for construction in Glen Arden redevelopment site and whereas NVR Incorporated, doing business as Ryan Homes, submitted application for building permits, 14 townhome dwelling units on Lot A, 14, Lot 14 Block B, Lot 13 Block B, Lot 12 Block B, Lot 11 Block B, Lot 10 Block B, Lot 9 Block B, Lot 8 Block B, Lot 7 Block B, Lot 6 Block B, Lot 5 Block B, Lot 4 Block B, Lot 3 Block B, Lot 2 Block B, and Lot 1 Block B to the city of Glen Arden. And whereas Prince George's County has reviewed and approved building application numbers 78182023, 78172023, 78142023, 78132023, 14852023, 14832023, 14822023, 14812023, 1449, 14792023, 14782023, and 14772023, 14762023, 14732023, and 14722023, Exhibit A to the city of Glen Arden. And whereas the code enforcement manager has reviewed application 15, 16, and 17, Exhibit B for construction for 14 townhome dwelling units on said 14 lots and finds them to be in conformance with the city of Glen Arden Code, Chapter 15, Building Construction. And whereas the council has determined that the building permits for the construction of townhome dwellings, Lot 14 Block B, Lot 13 Block B, Lot 12 Block B, Lot 11 Block B, Lot 10 Block B, Lot 9 Block B, Lot 8 Block B, Lot 7 Block B, Lot 6 Lot B, Lot 5 Lot B, and Lot 4 Block B, Lot 3 Block B, Lot 2 Block B, and Lot 1 Block B to the city of Glen Arden should be issued. And now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Glen Arden, sitting in regular special session this 28th day of March 2024, has determined that, one, payment of the application fee $75 and building permit fee $840 for each of the 14 townhome dwelling units for a total of $1,050 in application fees and $11,760 in building permit fees, which will be applied to the building permit review budget line. Two, submit three copies of the approved Prince George's County permit, three sets of the approved permit drawings, approved plans and drawings in PDF format to the city of Glen Arden for the construction of each lot for Phase 1, Exhibit C. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon adoption.
Thank you, Council Clerk. Any discussion?
Yeah, you got to bring it to the floor first. You got to bring it to the floor first. Bring your resolution to the floor. Because we have to, somebody has to move safely.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Madam President, I move that we vote on our Resolution R 47 2024.
A second? Is there a second?
Second.
Hang on, hang in just a second. Okay, could we have a voice vote?
Certainly. Councilwoman Guillaume?
Yes.
Councilman Hairston?
Yes.
Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Council Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
And Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Vote carries.
Thank you. Second Resolution, CAR 012024, a charter resolution to amend Section 809 Budget Administration.
Thank you very much.
Council Clerk?
Charter Resolution 012024. The sponsors are Councilman Herring, Councilwoman Ferguson, I'm sorry, Council Vice President, and Councilwoman Guillaume. The public hearing was held on the 21st of March and we're here in special regular session. A charter resolution to amend Section 809 Budget Administration. Whereas the city of Glen Arden is a municipal corporation of the state of Maryland, operating under Article 9E, I'm sorry, 11E of the Constitution of Maryland, subsection 502 of the Local Government Article, Annotated Code of Maryland, as amended. And whereas Section 809D of the city charter requires all checks issued in payment of salaries or other municipal operations be signed by the mayor, the treasurer, and a council member. And whereas the signers on the checks have a fiduciary responsibility to ensure that all vendors are paid promptly and all checks are signed in a timely manner. And whereas the mayor has consistently refused to sign checks for certain individuals and for certain companies with no justifiable reason. And whereas failure to do so can affect the city's credit rating and credit worthiness. And whereas the mayor has consistently disregarded her fiduciary duty by not signing all checks that are deemed valid in accordance with Section 809 Budget Administration of the city charter. Now therefore be it resolved and ordained that this Section 809 Budget Administration be repealed, reenacted, and amended to read as follows. Section 809 Budget Administration, no change in A, B, and C. D, checks. All checks issued in payment of salaries or other municipal operations shall be issued and signed by the treasurer and two council members selected by council. And there's no change in E. Now therefore be it further resolved and ordained by the city of Glen Arden that the amendment of the Charter of the city of Glen Arden hereby proposed by this enactment be adopted on the 28th of March 2024 shall become effective on the 50th day after its approval, May 17, 2024, adoption by the city council unless petitioned by referendum in accordance with subsection 301 of the Local Government Article, Annotated Code of Maryland, within 40 days following its adoption. A complete and exact copy of this resolution shall be posted in the city offices located at 8600 Glen Arden Parkway, Glen Arden, Maryland for 40 days following its adoption by the council. And a fair summary of the resolution shall be published in the newspaper, having general circulation in the city, not less than four times at a weekly intervals, also within the 40-day period following the adoption.
Thank you. Council Clerk, is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So move.
Is there a second? Second.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear who seconded.
Is there a second? I'll second. Please take a voice.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear who seconded.
I seconded.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Did you want a discussion on it?
Yeah.
I would like to ask a few questions of the Council Clerk. This was advertised in accordance to Maryland state law?
Yes.
And the advertisement did require us to have the meeting in accordance to Maryland state law 21 days before?
No, we had to post it 21 days prior and then the meeting six days after that.
Okay, so we're in conformance to what the state of Maryland required?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Council President, may I?
Yes.
I just want to, just in case, I just want to make sure that the treasurer, who is on the line, I believe I see his name on the screen, but if the treasurer can be on standby, just in case, because I can't hear. Treasurer Steward, are you there?
Yes, I am on.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Gray, if you can, the volume is extremely low. So if you can raise the volume, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Guillaume. Could we have a voice vote?
Councilwoman Guillaume?
Yes.
Councilman Hairston?
Yes.
Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Council Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
Council President Curtis?
Yes.
Vote carries.
Thank you. Okay. Now we will have citizens comment. They have five minutes. Go to the podium and say your name towards your end.
There we go. Good evening. My name is Richard Arroyo Montgomery. I am a resident in Ward 3. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and voice my opinion on the charter resolution to amend Section 809. I have not been attending the meetings for quite some time because I'm disheartened by what the mayor has been doing to our city. At the meeting on March 21st, the mayor of this city called a sitting council member "a fungus in the city" and threatened him by saying that "you will have no power here and I'll take it to the next level." Those are quotes from the video. Her outbursts resulted in her removal from the meeting and brought shame to our city, further shame to our city. After such a display, I felt compelled to attend tonight's meeting because I needed to go on record and express my support of this charter resolution. I am a resident who has firsthandly and personally experienced the mayor's retaliation tactics. She sued me and the city for not declaring her the winner of the mayoral election in 2021. She insisted that we turn a blind eye to the charter, forego the runoff election, and declare her the winner. And when we did not, she named me in a lawsuit, which was dismissed with prejudice, meaning the decision was final. No ifs, ands, or buts about it. Again, I'm not surprised by this resolution and I only wonder why the council hasn't yet presented a resolution of no confidence in this mayor. I personally don't see a need for her as a citizen of this city. We have a major issue at Woodmore Town Center that the mayor brought to the attention of the HOA, of which I am the president, sometime during October through November of 2023. The mayor offered to assist in getting this resolved but has been unresponsive to communications from the HOA and its attorneys so that we can get this matter resolved and get our streets turned over to the city. Yet, we see her all over Facebook posting for photo ops in and out of the state with non-Glen Arden residents. But what has she done for the city of Glen Arden other than start the Polar Express and perhaps hand out some turkeys? That's what I've seen. She wasn't even present at a hearing in November of 2023 regarding the Alter Woodmore Apartments, a project that is coming to the city of Glen Arden, a project that the citizens of Glen Arden opposed. But our mayor, her voice, her attendance, missing from that meeting. It's really sad that we're here this evening discussing a charter change because of the mayor's refusal to sign checks. And it's even more sad that we've had to endure the mayor's backlash toward the city council, considering she ran on the unity ticket in 2021 with the majority of our current council members, which unfortunately, by the end of that election, they were de-unified because of her antics. And no need to believe me when I say that, you could ask any of the council members that ran on that ticket with her. Something's wrong and it needs to be corrected. Thank you, council members, for this time and for taking the first steps in correcting the wrongs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. Anyone else have any, any other citizen have any? Oh, Mr. Wilson, good to see you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Leo C. Wilson, Sr., World One resident. As usual, I'm always rarely recognized when I'm in the back, even if I raise both hands up, but that's, I'm accustomed to that. I was very disappointed from the last meeting. Let's do a little history. Mayor Dennis Smith, we had a problem with him. He would not, and they didn't have power to stop the veteran memorial from being built, would not sign off on the contract. The council had to take the power from him and so they could sign the contract. Then we had the beloved former mayor Estes. First, he signed contract, entered a contract before he was sworn in. So when the council finally took control, they had to terminate that contract. Then the council went on a retreat. While they were gone, he fired one vendor and the treasurer. When he knew he did not have the power, they had to be terminated between, by the mayor and the council. So when they came back, they had to reinstate those people. Then he come to a meeting, tried to disrupt the meeting, and when council member, or Herring either, I think he was the vice president, and saying he was out of order, went to remove his mic, then he swung at him. So when the police come up on the DS and go to get the mic, the mayor smacked his hand away. That's when they had to bend him over and put him in handcuffs. He left the DS in handcuffs. Then later on, he charged with criminal crimes while in office. Now we have a mayor that been gone for roughly, I've been told, almost a year not signing certain checks. When the charter clearly states, all checks must be signed by the treasurer, the mayor, and the council, appointed by the council. Now, they do have one or two backup council to sign check, but that's if the mayor's out of town, out of the country, is sick, in the hospital, something of that nature. If you're here, you do your job, if you're not, then step aside. What we have to, what's disturbed me the most about this, it took this council almost a year to come to this conclusion. I keep saying, I was the one that called for Dennis Smith to be removed. I'm the one that called for Estes to be removed. When are we going to wake up and smell the coffee? I'm going to make it clear to all the citizens. Glen Arden, when you elected a mayor, that's what you elected, a mayor. You didn't elect a king and your doggone didn't elect a queen. Enough is enough. It's time we move on for having a mayor, jump on plane. Thank you. I'm going out to the park so I can keep an eye on my village.
Oh, oh, thank you, Mr. Wilson. Carolyn, is Ms. Marwood?
Yes.
Yes.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I am in total agreement with the resolution that was passed to take the signing of the checks from the mayor. That is a responsibility that the mayor should do. She should have, she should have had more respect for the council people, the visitors, I mean, the vendors who she was signing the check for and put a dark mark on the city of Glen Arden. We had gone through this stage once before, paying our vendors late. We had just got back on track and paying our vendors on time to make the city be reputable and doing business with the vendors. The other thing I would like to do, I would like to thank Councilman Herring and Councilwoman Maurice Hairston for the tax rebate that we are about to get. I read it in the paper today. I want to thank them for their effort for doing this. And also want to thank Councilman Hairston for his diligence to try to get the city to go to 2221 representative, for Ward representatives. And I just want to show my appreciation and thank him for doing that for the city of Glen Arden. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marwood. Anyone else, any other citizens have any comments? Cross Entertainment.
Yes, I am totally, yes, this is Mario Cross. Yes, I am totally against this charter change and the resolution change to remove the mayor's check signing privileges. If the mayor has not signed checks that have went forward and somehow these checks are signed, then every check that has been signed without the mayor's signature and that has been cash is illegal. If you're stating that the mayor is not doing her job and that the mayor must sign a check with one council member and the treasurer, but yet checks have been signed with two council members and a treasurer, then the checks are illegal. None of the checks that were found were related to the city's bills. These were council members who violated city financial rules and the city council refused to request for feedback. They tried to get the mayor to sign a drafty check and it was rejected by her. And checks without resolutions today from the police. These are things that can be brought up as a lawsuit on the city. Just being straightforward, open, and transparent, as some of people on this board like to say. And if you have a city without a mayor, like some people stated, some of the other citizens, like Richard, then you should not be a city. You should be taking your status away of being a city and being brought back down to a township or even a village. And when you come up with the mayor sued the city, it's because it was a violation of the charter. The charter was violated and held up during the election time. Each of the council members that were participated in that, holding up the election, should be charged with a misdemeanor. Just keeping it open and just keeping it straightforward to you all. So citizens that are listening in, when a charter was violated, each of the council members, past and present, should be charged with a misdemeanor for violating the charter by holding up the election past the right time. This is the law. It should have been done in 30 days, but it was not. It was far past 30 days. It was more like 70-something days before the actual election for the two candidates running for mayor took place. There has been several things that the mayor, there's several things that the mayor has supported throughout the whole state of, the whole county, like feeding, the lunches in the children, in the classrooms for kids who couldn't afford things, been on the Indianapolis for 60 different legislative votes on different things that they've been bringing up for our citizens and other citizens throughout the county and throughout the state. And the city council is still trying to block the mayor. And the city council is still trying to block the mayor. They do not pay the mayor dues. The mayor pays all her dues out of her pocket. This should be something that should be inside of the budget for coming out of the city's, um, budget envelope for this. Not out of the mayor's personal finances for paying dues for different, uh, registration, for different conferences or, um, different events that go on that, that request the mayor or the municipal league. They refuse to support that.
President Curtis.
Thank you all so much.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, I, I'll, I'll go after all the other citizens that have gone, um, if, if that's fine. Or, or I'll, I'll address it now. It's fine. I'll just address it now, uh, just in case my computer cuts off. So what, what I've learned in being in this position is to, um, to address untruths in the moment so it won't go unchecked as if though it is the truth. Um, and, you know, while I, I would, would expect any husband to support, to support his wife as Mr. Cross does for the mayor. I would not be surprised if the, the mayor was actually telling him to say everything that he said tonight. Because everything that he said, most of what he said, was just untrue, uh, which is consistent with what the mayor, um, has supported, just untruths throughout her, her tenure as mayor. Um, the checks that were not signed were not all related to council members. There were related to vendors as well, to the police department vendors, to, uh, vendors of the city. So it wasn't just that council member Herring's check wasn't getting signed. Uh, these were multiple checks, whether it be a council member, a vendor, things related to the police department. Those checks simply were not getting signed. Um, and it wasn't because, I mean, it, it wasn't because there was anything wrong with them. Her exact response was, I don't want to sign it. The ma, the, the council could sign it, let them sign it. And so that type of behavior is just pretty much unbecoming of a mayor. Um, and it should not be tolerated. Uh, while I will agree with some comments that have been made before that we probably should have took, uh, action on this sooner, uh, I hesitate, uh, on taking away power from any office without, uh, all levels of diplomacy being, uh, exhausted so that it'd be, it could be the last resort. Uh, but unfortunately, the council is in this position and we must move forward. Um, there are no current members or past members who are in violation of the charter or should be charged with a misdemeanor. Uh, as Mr. Richard, uh, Royal Montgomery stated, that that lawsuit was dismissed, um, because it had no merit that we should appoint her, the, the current mayor, uh, as mayor. She would have to go through the proper steps of a runoff election with the top two, uh, vote getters. She did, and she won. Um, so that's that. Um, and so I just want that to be corrected and not have that lie sit out there as if though, um, you know, she just wasn't signing checks related to individual council members because that was not the case. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Show the checks. We haven't seen the checks.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. Um, Mr. Stewart, um, could you speak, um, to, uh, the, uh, situation concerning the checks that were, um, denied, uh, to be signed? The checks, um, from, I mean, actually, they weren't just council checks, but the checks that weren't signed, the vendors, and also, um, the, the reason that was given. And also, could you, uh, state whether or not the, uh, mayor does indeed have a budget, um, that was granted to her, um, in this budget, that she has money and funds to spend?
Thank you, Vice President Ferguson. Um, what, the first thing I'd like to say is, um, or what I would like to put forward is three cents. Um, the mayor was upset with me about something, and she went as far as to not sign a petty cash check for the, um, for the city. Um, she saw a receipt which was for $59.97, and she saw a voucher that says $60. I showed her that the invoice itself, the receipt, has been covered, and the cash that was in the petty cash still was intact. So there is nothing wrong with the request for the petty cash, which was, in her opinion, of by three cents. And there was nothing I could tell her to let her realize that all was covered. The certificate for the cash was done, and it is showing that from the beginning of what we have as cash, the spending and the amount remaining was all intact. And because she was upset with me, I think she didn't sign it. She said, let someone else sign it. Let the council sign it. And that has always been her mantra. Whenever she's upset with anyone, especially like the police department, the chief, their reimbursement checks, the checks are whatever he needs to get done. She would say, hey, let the, let the council sign it. I'm not signing it. I can tell you, there are times when she does find issues with regard to some of the documentation, which we all are here to cover each other in the sense of review and approved checks. And there are sometimes, there are items that need further review. And that will do, we'll do the review, get the necessary documents so that that could be signed. But when it comes to the council, their events, the members, she's not enthused to sign their checks, to sign for their vendors with regard to events that they are having. And many times, I remember at one point, I said to her, is okay, I will stop giving you checks that are related to the council because maybe that's the direction that I see you're going. And she said, no, no, let me see them still. And I don't know why you want us, why she would want to see them if you're not going to sign them. So in all, I'm saying, it put me under some stress because now I have vendors to pay, I have to get the, those checks out by a certain time. And I have to be all over the place trying to get checks signed. And I don't think, um, as the mayor of the city, I should be going through that kind of, of, um, hoop to get checks signed so that we could pay our vendors. Um, the petty cashing is, is, is a small thing, but it is the, the, the cash that is held in the city for anything that needs to be done immediately. And a simple thing as thinking that it is out by three cents. She did not sign it, and no matter what I showed her, she just says no. Um, so that's, that's my input in this area. I just need to be able to pay the city's bills on time. So, thank you.
Also, could you speak on her budget? Does she have money and funds in her budget?
And, um, for that, I would say the, the mayor has funds in her budget to pay for, um, her events. Okay, so her conference and training, there's money there to deal with some of her, um, if, some of the, the, the conferences that she has to go. Uh, what I could say is that in previous budgets, um, the mayor wanted actually to go to every conference that are available within maybe the United States. And we have to let her know that, you know, um, please be conservative with how we operate with city's funds. Um, when it comes to her events, and the mayor comes up with really good events, um, at the end of most of those events, there are times when I'm not getting enough supporting documents to clear some of those invoices or the payments that she's asking. And I can say that is where the issue started. At the point where she would be screenshotting receipts or invoices and sent to the treasury to pay for certain things that I'm saying, no, you gotta give me a proper invoice in order to pay those, those, um, those bills. And I think that's where the issue started. But the mayor does have a budget. Um, what we have actually done is put most of our events with the administration and with the, um, police department in order just to make sure that the treasury actually get the documentation required for audit purposes. So, yes, she does have monies in order to carry out the business of the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, may I ask the treasurer one question while we're at it? Before we do, um, so, um, uh, Mr. Stewart, I'm looking at the finance report that you just sent us for the executive office, and I just want you to confirm that, looking at this, the mayor has $5,000 for conference and training?
Yes, she does.
Date, according to this, she's spent, um, $184. So she has $4,816 left to spend for conference and training. So, um, have you denied her request to use these funds for her conference and training?
No, I would not deny, um, any requests from the mayor with regard to conference and training. Um, the only way I can deny is if the amount of the request is more than the budget. So I, I could not just stop her when there is funds there to pay for her event or her conferences and training.
I just wanted to be clear because I know that statement has been made over and over again by the mayor that I paid for all my conference and training out of my pocket, which I guess she chose to do because the, there's $4,800 sitting there that hasn't been touched and we're in March. Um, so I just wanted to be clear and I just wanted to make sure we understood that, you know, this council did allot $5,000 for conference and training and only $184 of that has been used, uh, to date. Um, thank you.
Yes.
Um, Mr. Delmar.
I have one more. Uh, can I just ask the treasurer one more question, please?
Council President.
As it relates to, uh, treasurer, um, just different things that the mayor has support to you, uh, can you confirm that she's also tried to get, um, she submitted a proposal to get Cross Entertainment, which is her business, her husband's business, to be paid by tax city dollars? And then that was denied because it was a violated ethics?
Uh, that is correct. Um, but when we saw it, we, we, we shut it down because, um, as you stated, it, it's a, it's a ethics violation in the sense of they call it arms length, um, um, arms length transaction. As the city, um, mayor, um, it would be a violation to have, um, her business or family, uh, be paid in such manner. Thank you.
It was not a proposal, it was an assignment.
I just want to, I just want to, I just want to cap that comment off is that, um, when we approached the mayor with that, um, that accusation of instructing the administration to reach out to Entertainment Cross to get a proposal so that the city can pay Cross Entertainment, the mayor denied it. And if you recall, you can go back to the, um, the recording. We actually had evidence that, of her email of the exact request to the city manager. So I just want to put that note out there, but thank you. We go on to citizens' comments again.
Thank you, Mr. Delmar. State your name and with Ward three.
How you doing? I'm Mr. Delmar, Ward three. Um, Derek says some of the stuff I wanted to say, but I just want to ask a question. If the mayor doesn't sign the checks, is that a violation of the charter? If she decides I'm not going to sign the checks, is that a violation of the charter? I'm asking the council.
Oh. Yes, it's stated in the charter.
So it's a violation of the charter, she doesn't sign the checks?
I mean, there are instances where she is excused from signing them, such as like if she's on vacation, you know, if she's not.
I mean, just outright refusal to sign them.
Outright refusing, yes, because it's in, it's in the charter. It states that the, that the treasurer, the mayor, and a council member. However, we do have alternate, um, two other alternate, um, council members, um, which, um, if either the three, um, one of the three or whatever, they're not available, then we can step up and sign the checks.
Okay.
So again, even if, um...
I'm just asking because I heard tonight, she doesn't sign them, gave no rational reason. Y'all supposed to be in violation because y'all signed the checks. That doesn't make any sense. So she doesn't have, sign the checks, how's, um, vendors going to get paid or the council going to get paid? They just going to sit there forever?
Now we have to step up and sign.
Exactly, so I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you. Um, Cynthia Gray.
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Gray from Ward three. I just wanted to comment that I'm in support of changing it to treasurer and to council members to sign the checks. I think it makes sense, especially with everything that's being detailed here today. Um, and as a citizen who often gets on these calls, I just want to make a comment that I'm very disheartened by the continuous pettiness and what appears to be ego.
You're muted. Ms. Gray, you're muted. Okay.
Hi, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, we can now.
Okay, I'll just start all over. I am in favor of changing, um, the signing of the checks from, to the treasurer and to council people. I think it makes sense, especially given all the details that we hear constantly about the animosity. And as a citizen, I just want to make a comment, uh, how disheartened I am with the constant pettiness and ego that appears to be coming from one side. I think it's very unproductive and unbecoming. And, um, I really would encourage change in that aspect of it. That is it.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. Um, Councilwoman Gill.
Thank you, Council President. I hear an echo. I, I just want to give context to certain things as it pertains to what happened last week, specifically March 21, and to, to actually fill in some gaps, right? Because certain things were stated that were untruths, and it was stated from a citizen who was against this resolution. I believe it was Cross Entertainment. I was one of the folks who ran, who campaigned with the person who occupies the office of the mayor. On March 24th, 2021. To give context, we had to submit our intent to run. I believe by March 31st or March 30th or something like that. So before we even submitted. Our documentation. Myself. And. My former running mate. And others exchanged a text. Where we let. The person who occupies the office of the mayor. Know and out specifically. Did you know that for the mayoral election? You need 50% plus one to win. That was March 24th, 2021. At 8:23 PM if you want to see the receipts. If not. And this was by council president, by the current council president, but he was running at the time. We didn't turn in our stuff yet. If not. There is a special runoff election between the top two candidates on June 1st. The response on March 24th, 2021. Again, we didn't turn in our documentation yet. Was from. The person who is currently the mayor. Oh, let's go. We want to move forward. We got this. Placing bets that the candidates projected out of Ward one and two will split their votes. I'm going to put in the word. Thanks you all. Phew. Nothing bad with that. But just to give context, that's March 24th, 2021. Fast forward. An election was held in May. We turned in our documentation. That means you already knew what it was, that if you don't get 50% plus one, there will be a runoff. You still turned in your paperwork to run for mayor. When the election was over. The person who is currently the mayor did not. Get 50% plus one of the votes. Yes, they received the most votes out of everyone who ran. I believe it was 40%. But there's a difference between 40% and 51%. I may not know everything, but I know math. And there's a huge difference. What ended up happening, however, was when the election was done. My former running mate. Wanted to be declared the winner. At the time, the prior elect, the prior council, which I was not a part of. Had not put money for runoff for the board of election to do a runoff. So. The new council had to come in. Now. Did. She have a gripe to say there needs to be a runoff? Absolutely. 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 But there's a difference between saying there needs to be a runoff. Versus I need to be declared the winner. And when they weren't declared the winner. When they started doing some antics, I publicly. Disassociated myself. From my running mate, who happens to be my neighbor. A few doors down. Cause I don't do any things with my hands hidden. What then took place was the new council came in, not the old council. The new council, meaning this current council. First order of business was to approve the board of election. To get funding to do a runoff because we believe they deserve to have a runoff. When I say they, I'm speaking about. The current mayor. And the person who was. I guess who had the second highest amount of votes. First thing, and we were excited. We were like, great. This is our former running mate. She's going to have her runoff. The other person is going to have the runoff. The city can keep going and all will be well. We can't as new council members do what the, be held accountable for what the prior council did. But what? The current. Mayor did was. All of us, we're all smiling like, yes, you're going to have a runoff. She attended the meeting as a citizen. And the very next day. Very next day. We got a letter that we're being sued. For not doing a runoff. But not only was it, if then if you, and again, these are legal, I keep telling you guys. I am the queen of receipts. Don't listen to me if you don't want to. Just ask me, can you, you said this, can you provide this? Since the media is all over Glen Arden nowadays, I can prove all these things. It's a matter of public record. So what ends up happening? Is we get sued and not only do we get sued, but I believe it was Mister Roya Montgomery. Who was being hounded. You need to declare me the winner. And in the documentation, the legal documentation. If you read through everything. They're not even asking for the runoff. They said, I didn't get a runoff. But then by the time they did that. We already stated a date for the runoff. So you could have withdrew. Your petition. She chose not to. That's not unity. So you're suing the city that you want to represent. You're holding people accountable who had no hearts in it. But if anything, they gave you what you wanted. What you deserved, which was a runoff. But now it's, I don't even want to runoff. I need to be declared the winner. And the judge. Again, they're. Public record, y'all. Get your transcripts. Don't listen to me. Get your transcripts. Don't listen to me. Don't listen to anybody else here. Don't even listen to this side. Just get your transcripts. Because the judge. Unequivocally. Stated that what she was requesting was in violation. Was in violation. Of. This municipality. That's number one. So not happy, you sue the city. Not happy, you sue a citizen who volunteered to be on the board. Okay, that's lawsuit. Two lawsuits. We heard. The only person that stated that they were not in support of this, I believe it was Cross Entertainment. I don't know if you all heard it, but I heard lawsuits several times come out of their mouths. I heard Ms. Domeno come out of their mouth several times. There's something going on here. Because what I heard last week. Was. We're going to ta- we're going to take it to the next level. That's what was stated. We're going to take it to the next level. From the mayor of the city of Glen Arden. And what ends up happening is we all get lumped in. All the elected officials of Glen Arden, don't do that. If you're going to quote somebody, quote them, please don't lump all of us. Don't do that. If the media is listening, since you guys are watching us. Be accurate. So we have two lawsuits. Fast forward. I believe it was Mister Wilson who spoke, who said. Why did it take us so long or something along those lines? I apologize if I'm paraphrasing. Again. I can't even, I can't even contest that, but. You try to give hope. You try to say, you know what? We're going to try to make this work. Council. President has the patience of Job. I'm a New Yorker. I'm Caribbean. I don't know. I, I'm just quiet. But. He tried. This has been going on forever. And what did he get out of it? I doubt anyone has ever heard council. President's voice go past a certain syllable. He doesn't even look right when he tries to even speak loud. But what he did get. Because he was just trying to find a way to have the check signed. Was the sheriff knocking at his door. Another lawsuit. Another lawsuit. And that particular lawsuit. Was for a peace order. It wasn't to me, but I as a wife. I as a mother to a black son. I could not believe. That this man. Who did nothing but just try to broker peace or a solution. To a menial problem as far as I was concerned at the time. Now has to go to court. The person. Who the mayor called as a witness. Ended up testifying for council president. Saying, no, what you're saying is not true. Get your transcripts, y'all. But then taking it a step further. There was in a criminal. Criminal case. Criminal case. Over a man who sits right there. A man who sits right there. For false imprisonment? Are you kidding me? Are you kidding me? We're public servants. People can make a mockery. People who spread lies. In their fake media stuff. You could do all of that. But we're real humans. And that person did not deserve that. We may argue over here. We may have discord, but they did not deserve that. None of us deserve that. No one over here deserves that. That case was dismissed. It wasn't even brought forth. But see, I have screenshots. So if y'all looking for what I'm saying, I have it here too. That was another lawsuit. And this man who has never had a criminal record, never had anything, anything. In his record, now he has it. And incident, ironically enough, coincidentally enough. Two council members, Councilman Herring. Councilman Hairston. Were hosting an expungement fair. That very same week. And who was there? The person who occupies the office of the mayor. Expungement fair to take records. To, to, excuse me, to expunge. Things off of a lot of black and brown men, women. But I'm going to stick to men right now's. Records. But yet and still, you went and falsified, made false charges against a black man. Make it make sense to me. You don't have to agree with everything that we say or do. You could be somebody's relative, their friend or whatever. My husband. Will tell you that we disagree on a lot of things, a lot of things. But it goes too far. It goes too far. So now. We get to March 21. Councilman Herring has been a lot of things. I've publicly disagreed with him. I've privately disagreed with him. I've publicly agreed with him. I publicly. I privately agreed with him. But what I will say is this, if you sued people. If you've done all of these things and now you say. We're going to take it to the next level. What is the next level? What is the next level? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gill. Um. Wanted to say, go to the podium, state your name and with Ward Jaren.
Good evening. Good evening. Um, I'm from Ward two. Um, and I have a question.
Could you state your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Lake, I'm Lakeia Sylvester.
Hi.
Yeah, how you doing? So my question is, I hear, um, a lot of accusation. Um, I hear what everybody has to say. Um, but it's always two sides to a story and I have yet to hear response from the mayor. I've heard all the accusations. But I have yet to hear response from the mayor. I would like to hear that. Thank you.
You already spoke. Yeah.
Hello, Dyna Price, Ward two. Um. Last week I asked questions. Um, and I felt that they weren't answered. So I brought up the, the fact that. You brought documentation. You had a whole folder of all of the checks that the mayor did sign. When I asked, was there a conflict of interest? Was that the reason why she didn't sign the checks? Nobody really addressed that. So what I heard today was that there was a check in question. So this is the second check that we're hearing. That had a, um, a mistake on it, a three cent mistake. Had she signed that? She would have been wrong for signing a check with a mistake on it. So that's the second check that we're hearing and we're saying that she's not signing checks. So let's be accurate when we're saying she's not signing checks. You said she weren't, she wasn't signing the council people's checks, right? Is that a conflict of interest when you're throwing an event? And then you are, let's say, getting paid from that event for being a vendor. Right? Um, Harrington said that he has some checks that wasn't signed by the mayor. Was that? Because you were a vendor at the.
Point of order, Madam President, you can refer to me as Councilman Herring or Mister Herring.
Absolutely. Councilmember Harrington. Is that, did I get it right? Herring, Herring. Okay, great. So, and I'm sorry that you feel like I messed up your name and now you have a little hostility towards me. I'm a citizen. And I have every right to stand here and ask any question I would like without aggression. Or dissuading me from asking my questions. That's the purpose of me being here. So. My question was, was he a vendor or are these, um. Checks that are not being signed because they are a conflict of interest or is it mistakes? Um, I forget his name. I can't see it from here. He mentioned Mister, Mister Stewart mentioned, I don't know if he wants us a title with that, but Mister Stewart mentioned that. He was frustrated because there was a mistake and the, the mayor refused to sign that. Well. It's the same way. If she has a check, don't you think she would be frustrated getting checks that have mistakes? She's not going to sign them. Nobody would if your reputation is at risk. So I just want to point out that. Exactly what Ms. Sylvester said. Let's hear both sides because there always is another side. Now, when I came up here last week, I didn't come here. I came here asking questions, not pointing fingers. I harmed no one with my words. Not one person did I harm with my words. I only was asking questions and when. Councilmember Harrington, I'm sorry, Harrington. When he, um, started. I understood that, I can't see over there. I'm sorry. I just can't see over there. So if I got it wrong, I apologize. Um, so when I came up here, it wasn't intentionally to. Do anything but ask questions as a citizen, which is my right. Right? I'm encouraged to come to the meetings as every resident of Glen Arden. But I felt like I got a little hostility. I was kicked out because I said, he was starting to threaten. I felt like he was starting to threaten people, call them out because of their affiliation with the mayor. And I did not want that to happen here that is videotaped for everyone. That's all I was trying to, to say as this was being allowed to happen in a public forum. I was kicked out, but as I'm walking out the door. It is said, please walk her to her car so nothing happens to my car. You have now. The same thing you guys said that was done to. You have now, the same thing you guys said that was done to the president was done to me. I'm a single parent. I give my time, just like you guys give your time. I'm in the public like you are working. I don't expect for someone to insinuate that I would commit a crime, that I have never committed a crime. My son, I had relatives calling me, asking me, "Were you going to do something to his car?" He insinuated that someone else had done something to his car earlier. I don't know how that's part of the charter. I don't know how that was part of a conversation that we are here, we were here to discuss some things. For you to insinuate and then arm the police to walk me out to my car saying that I possibly would commit a crime, that I've never committed a crime. I've never flattened a tire, and never would I. I will never touch someone else's
Thank you.
property.
Okay, I would like to speak on some things. One, as far as the checks being signed or not signed. When I put that package of checks, I mean, I didn't even have to do that. It was there, and I gave an example. So that was just one week where, and I also stated that the mayor didn't sign one particular check. And it did have something to do with the council. But when I looked at the check, for me to sign, the invoice mistakenly was attached, had draft. I publicly said, "I do not blame her for not signing that check. I wouldn't sign it either." Right then, you know, but we do have to sign it eventually because the service was already rendered. So that was an example. But that is not the case about her not signing the checks. If that's not the case, you know, we're first signing the checks. So as far as you getting put out, I mean, in any meeting, there's rules and regulations, there are order. Now, you had your five minutes, and it was up, just like this now was up, and you, you know, sat, you know, down, you know, and like you should. But you cannot speak from your seat. That is, that's out of order. Now, and when you are anyone, I mean, I could be dismissed. You know, if I get pulled into order and I keep on going, I can get carried away from here. But there's an order in everything. You know, you just cannot just holler out because you don't, you know, you don't agree with anything. Whether you're in a meeting, at work, whether you're at church, whether you're in a lab, whatever. If you, you know, if somebody says something you don't like, like to, you know, what somebody's saying, you cannot just blurt out. Last week, Councilman Herring was speaking, and the mayor just bust in over top of him and start talking. Now, I know, you know, we would have given her a chance to speak, but she just kept on to the point where it was disrupting the whole meeting. And the thing was, trying to get order, once we got order, then she would have been called on. This has happened many times. So while he was saying something, you know, I didn't see you one time raise up or even flint, because I watched you when she called him a fungus. And, you know, you're not saying anything else. So your five minutes is up. And so a couple of things you quoted last week that I said, and I didn't say that. The whole thing is, I mean, you know, we're not a bunch of lies up here. I know I'm not. And so if I say a thing, then it's true. We, you know, we do have checks that we can pull and compare them to when the mayor was out of town or on vacation. Then they don't count, because we have to step up. But I'm talking about ones that, the same batch, you got 42 checks, 23 or whatever, and her signature on all of them, except for the ones that belong to us. I'll give you an example of the holiday party that we gave for the town. Out on the committee, I had, we had some giveaways. So we had, I paid for those. Treasurer was out. So I paid for those. They were almost like, almost $500. I bought the two cakes. They were $160 for two. I bought some gift cards to give away to the, because we had games. So I had a total of almost $800. That's what we're talking about reimbursement. We can, you know, so I bought it for an event. And so I'm getting my money back. And so I'm buying two cakes. This is, you know, "Happy Holiday, City of Glen Arden," from Wegmans. I have the email. I have the invoice. I even provided my predacted bank statement, just showing that, everything, which I don't have to do that. We had a P.O. The packages are in order. And so when I was told that my check, you know, was not being signed, I asked. I said, "Well, what, did she say anything?" She said, "Let the council do it." But, and we constantly give her all the checks and hope that she would, you know, sign them. It's not like we keeping them from her and hoping that maybe she'll go ahead and sign them. So just like the treasurer said, you know, maybe we'll keep them from you, and that way you don't have to worry about it. No, because she wants to see what we're doing, and that's fine, because she should see what we're doing. So no one is doing anything deliberate to her. I was, I ran with her. I would get batches of her literature and pass it out in Ward 1 for her. So I'm not one to be, I'm just speaking for myself, because again, I will do like my colleague did, for those that I want to report and write articles that are not correct. You know, I'm not doing anything deliberate, you know, and I'm not a liar. And so I don't like this. I don't like it at all. I don't like the attention that the city of Glen Arden, and I don't like the misprints, whether it's about the mayor, whether it's about our city manager, our police department, or the council. I mean, if you're going to report, report. But what I'm saying is that we are not doing anything. And the mayor does have, she has, once a month, she has her form, I don't know what she calls it, but she does have her time to speak. And oftentimes, for those, a lot of people say, "Well, you know, you don't let the mayor speak." This is a council meeting. This is a council meeting, and there are times when, you know, she will speak, she gives her reports, you know, but this is not a council and mayor meeting. This is not a council and city manager meeting. So I just resent the fact that, you know, anybody trying to imply that I'm doing anything hateful. Because I, you know, I just want to say that, you know, I cannot sit here and say, I am, you know, I normally don't even say this, but I'm going to say it for the record. I cannot, you know, sit up here and profess that I'm a believer of God, or I'm a minister of the gospel. And I'm going to sit up here and do, I don't like this. I do not like this. It grieves me. When I left here on the 21st, and you can ask the council clerk, I was getting ready to give my resignation. I don't like this. It vexes my spirit. So I'm done. Yes, you may.
I do want to answer some questions that Ms. Price just had also asked in regards to conflict of interest. So in my experience, no, it hasn't been conflict of interest. I know for me personally, when I was trying to get reimbursed for Glen Arden Day, where I purchased, I, what was it? I purchased the plaques. The plaques, for anybody who attended Glen Arden Day, it's when we honor citizens who have, who we feel have made an impact, not saying that no, not if, not saying that other citizens who didn't get an award didn't make an impact, but we can only give but so much. And it was online purchases. And when I made that purchase, gave all my receipts, gave everything, as I typically do, I couldn't get my reimbursement. And I'm not going home with the plaque. It's not for me. I'm not banging a plaque for myself and asking the city to give me money. So it's not a conflict of interest. And that's why also, I believe, Ms. Price, before you came, I had asked Mr. Stewart to still be on the line, should there be any questions and stuff like that? And I would implore you as well, because you are a citizen, to ask, you are within your rights to call a treasurer to ask certain questions, like, you know, within your right. So, and I applaud any citizen who comes and asks questions, whether I agree or disagree. It's our role to listen. We may not have to like each other, I don't dislike, but you know what I mean. But you know, you know what I mean. And so I do want to say that. And I also want to state that, I want to overly state that, of course, if there's checks that there are discrepancies on, yeah. You know, I know you said it, but I want to say it again and again and again. But it's when every check, every check that comes from the side of an expense that was attributed to a council initiative, a council event, or a council this, or a council that, the vendor is not being paid. I know specifically the videographer for our Thanksgiving event, our holiday event, like, it's young, small, black-owned business, like, it's not fair. It's not, it's not, you know? And so we have to do our due diligence. We have to pay vendors on time, and we can't hold the city hostage. And lastly, what I will say is this, because there was also a comment that was made last week, and I was just saying point of order while I was on Zoom, but about we don't speak to the mayor and things of that nature. I can only speak for myself. I am one of those people that, if I feel that there's negativity, if I feel that there's heightened energy, where, again, I went down a path of, there's this lawsuit, there's this misdemeanor, there's this lawsuit, there's this, I'm staying away. I don't even want to engage unless I have to, right? So that's where I come in. And when we are at this meeting, and I think what a lot of people misconstrue, and Council President kind of, not kind of, she stated, was this is the city council meeting. This is not City of Glen Arden meeting. This is a city council meeting, the same way the mayor has her meeting. She has her platform. We're not invited to speak. We're not welcomed, actually. And especially a few years ago, like, she would just blast us, and we would just get things sent our way. But it comes with the territory, I get it. But oftentimes, what we've seen, at least what I've seen, let me stop saying we, what I've seen is a spew of unsubstantiated commentary that is intended to incite folks. And that's not what I'm here for. I'm just here to state the facts. That's why every time I say something, I think, "If you don't want to listen to me, just go ahead and look it up yourself." So I just wanted to say that, Ms. Price, that if you feel like, I hope I answered your question. I've heard the conflict of interest. And Mr. Stewart is also on the call, and that's it for me.
Madam President, may I, since that was addressed, let me say this. I am not coming at Ms. Price with hostility, but again, I think my name is clear enough on there to know how to pronounce it. And I just feel that, you know, if you thought that was hostile, I don't know what you think the mayor did last week. Because that was straight up hostile. Because I'm going to tell you straight up, as a 20-year veteran, her and her husband, who are well aware of what the Constitution says, and she's sitting here accusing this council of treason, and everybody who knows treason, is treason is punishable by death, and that's in the Constitution. So should I take what you're, take that as a direct threat to me and this council? Because you say you're going to take it to the next level. And when you say you're going to take it to the next level, I like to know what that level is, because you just basically called me out of my name. So I, I mean, what more can you do? You know? You know, so I'm just saying this. You know, if you're going to hold me to a standard, you need to hold the mayor to a standard, because she's the leadership in this community. As for the conflict of interest, again, I just, I just, we just had a Black History event. I usually pay the vendors because I don't want to go through all of this. I don't want our vendors to be held up. So I paid for it out of my pocket. The Black History event, I paid for one of the artists that sang. I didn't even put in a reimbursement for that. I've done things in the city where I don't put in reimbursement for anything, you know? Because I want to, I want to give, I give back to the city. I want the people to have an enjoyable moment. If that's what I need to do, I do that, you know? Sometimes I'll just tell a person, "Okay, you go ahead and do this." I have one person that does something for us. I say, "I'll pay you out of my pocket. I'll deal with getting reimbursed later. We'll go through that." But again, if I do submit a reimbursement, and as well, it's in accordance to the spending policies of the city, I expect, and anybody expect to be reimbursed, to be paid. Any vendor should be paid, any council member should be paid. Any citizen that gives out their time or gives to the city should be paid. Because again, we, I mean, basically, what we do up here is really volunteer work. We get $4,800 a year. We've been here since 7 o'clock going on something, and we'd be here even longer on a number of issues. So it isn't about, you know, aggression and being upset with anybody. It's about just being fair and practical. Now, like I said, now there's one, I'm going to tell you, there is one check that the mayor wouldn't sign, and I know, and she's going to bring it up, and the council president wouldn't sign for some cupcakes. And we went round and round on that. And you know how stubborn I can be? I'm going to stay in my ground. I gave you what I gave, and I want my money, you know? But they wouldn't do it, so they went to the vendor and got whatever they needed to get. But the other times, you know, I, you know, in good faith, I've put out money for events, you know? And a lot of times, like I said, I don't ask for it back. So, but when I do, I think, and that's anybody, anybody should be expected to get paid back from the City of Glen Arden. We, as a council, have a fiduciary responsibility, and one of those is to ensure that all vendors and all bills are paid timely. And that's why we have to move forward with what we do, because when the mayor refuses to sign, again, that's going to affect our credit and our creditworthiness, because any vendor, even I, as a citizen, who's not being paid by the city can take you to collections, you know? And that can affect your credit rating. It took a lot. When I came on in 2003, vendors would not do anything with Glen Arden. They're like, "We're not going to give you one red thing until we see that check in our hand, and we're going to go straight to the bank and cash it first before we finish with you." You know, and that was the reputation of Glen Arden. "We're not going to give you anything on credit." And they would give us absolutely nothing on credit. You know, so, I mean, we worked really hard, and this council has worked hard to try to keep, maintain that creditworthiness, so that we won't have to run into that. And I think it isn't fair for one person to use their authority and their power, which I sure it's a state violation, because no one has a right to stop a municipal government from functioning. And that's basically what the mayor was doing when she refused to sign these checks, no matter who it was for. Because again, our credit is everything, you know? We have A1 credit, we don't have no debt, we have very little debt. I don't think we have any debt now. I think we paid off everything, you know? So the council's doing a really great job making sure that we are moving forward in a positive way. But again, you know, it isn't a conflict of interest when somebody needs to get reimbursed from some money that they put out, you know? If they want the money, if they did something for it, you know, we need to get reimbursed. We need to get paid back. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Are there any other citizen comments? State your name and your award.
After I had met Richard Rojo Montgomery, who always said that this was such a great city. Up until this point, it has been a great city. But I work for the federal government. I've done something called a detail in contracts. And with the federal government and contracts, we go by something called the FAR, the Federal Acquisitions Registered. So that sounds just exactly like the Charter. You cannot go against it. You can't change it. You can't anything with it. If that happens, the vendor could end up suing the government, and I'm in trouble. They also could defile something called a protest, which basically means they could come after us for damages. So just like the Charter states that the mayor has to, it says, "And the mayor has to sign the checks." It doesn't say "or." Those are two different things. "And" is including everyone as a group. "Or" is giving options. "Or" would be an option if she was out of town, she was hospitalized, or she just basically was on vacation. But you cannot go against a Charter and go at will and decide you want to run the city or do whatever you want, any kind of way you want, because it just doesn't run that way. I also want to thank you all for giving up your time with your family, your friends, and you could be doing other things. This is a hard job. You're not appreciated. And many times, I've seen you all in Wegmans or walking around the neighborhood, and, you know, we chat. But again, I stand with this vote that you had earlier, and there's no way around it. If the Charter says "and," it's going to be "and." And until that, we can't, we can't just do what we want. Other cities may look at us right now as a model, say, "Oh, look at Glen Arden. They have no debt. They're making sure that they're following their Charter. They're not having any issues." But right now, we're not looking too good. But, you know, just like Treasurer Stewart was saying, that, you know, there's monies, but there have been times when I've worked on a contract, and just like the mayor, there was a check that had draft on it. I went to the vendor, said, "There's some issues." But with the FAR, yet again, the FAR states that that invoice has to be paid within 30 days, and I'm representing the days, and I'm representing the federal government, which is the people of the United States who are paying me. I can't decide to say, well, you know what, I'm gonna put this aside. Even on my current position right now, I'm working as a court. I can't, just because I don't get along with the vendor, or the contract specialist, or the contract officer, say, well, you know what? I'm not going to pay this invoice or put this invoice in the system. It doesn't happen that way. There's times that I don't agree with some of the people I work with. There's times that we bump heads, but sometimes I just, just like Council President Curtis, he went to you and stated that, you know, when you were in that office or the room or whatever, and tried to speak with you, and tried to see your side, and tried to work with you. There are times, I do that all the time, but I'm not saying I go against my morals or beliefs, but I try to think on the other side also, and to be fair. And that's basically all I have to say, and thank you guys again, and I really appreciate you.
Hi, my name's Paul Braxton. I'm not sure which ward I live in, but I'm on corner 2518, Sir Michael. I just want to first thank all of the elected officers. I know it's a, it's a, it's a hard job to do. I think all of you guys had a call to service, and I want to applaud everyone, including the mayor, for volunteering to do this job, even though you're underpaid and underappreciated. Just know that any call to service is a higher calling than most other people would actually step up to do. So, that being said, you know, it's constantly seems like we keep going back over, you know, historic, you know, things that have happened or transpired. You know, it's one of those things, you can't relive the past, you got to kind of move forward. And I would just ask that everyone in the room, take the temperature down. You, we got to start somewhere by taking the temperature down. This has been two years in, and it just doesn't seem like this is getting any better. And it just reminds me of the fact that eventually, we're going to have another election, and if you guys can't settle it down, can't understand or, or take, have empathy for all sides involved and all parties involved, and I think, you know, everyone, you know, takes things from their perspective, but if we could just give a little more empathy to the other side, what the other person has to do, what their other responsibilities are, I think we'd get a lot further. But if, if we can't, eventually, there's going to be another election. And you won't get the opportunity to be involved anymore in that capacity. So I just want to remind everyone of that. And, and one of the speaker before me, if you guys can hear, I just want to make sure I'm being heard. The speaker before me did mention that he was, he worked on legislative branch, I worked on legislative branch also. And one of the things we do follow is the FAR, the Federal Acquisition Regulation. One of the things is that, you know, anything, any invoice, any, any, any time a vendor or contractor is, is contracted to do work, when there's contracts to do work, that vendor has responsibility to make sure that everything that needs to be there is there based on that regulation. Yes, that 30-day, that 30-day requirement to pay the vendor is there, but preceding that is the requirements of the vendor to prepare whatever invoice and everything that needs to be submitted for that to be there. Because the only way that invoice is going to be paid, what stops that 30 days is when the invoice or whatever supporting documentation has not been prepared accordingly. To include reimbursements, the council member mentioned about reimbursements, if he's doing things out of his pocket, and he's, he's asking for reimbursement, you still have a responsibility to make sure that everything that needs to be there is there. And yes, the mayor has a responsibility to sign something that is, that has been properly invoiced and properly supported. Now, if there's some disagreement there, then that should be an opportunity for both sides to take a, take a moment to, to, to deconflict, to bring the temperature down and understand what needs to happen, that we're both, that the city as a whole, including the mayor and the council, have a responsibility to pay whatever a proper invoice in 30 days. But I would also like to add that, in, in any capacity, executive or legislative branch, there has to be a check and balance. And what the council is suggesting is to remove the check and balance that is inherent in any function in government. And when you do that, when you remove the check and balance, so say, for example, the mayor is removed from the ability to have some input over how money's spent, and then that total authority is given to the council and the treasurer. We're going to be right back in the same disagreement, because there's going to be disagreements between the council and the treasurer, who's ever signing. There's no guarantee that the person signing are going to agree on what's being paid. You're going to be back in the same boat. So why try to remove one person, when I do believe that disagreements are going to continue to happen? And that's, that's inherent in any function in government. There are going to be disagreements, but you have to figure out a way to move past it. I don't believe in removing checks and balances. I do believe that the mayor has a responsibility to sign a proper invoice, and if she has a, a protest or anything about what's being, what's being, what's being asked for payment, what's being, I'm sorry, submitted for payment, or submitted for her request for signature, then she has the authority to ask, in a, in a, in a productive way, to provide any information that, if she has to get outside counsel to take a look at it. I don't know whoever, if the mayor even has outside counsel, an independent counsel.
Councilman Hamon?
I do need to clear up one thing. Ms. Price, Ms. Price made a comment about someone saying, when you walk out the door, make sure they don't mess with your car. No one said that, they didn't say that about you. That was not said about, that was not, you saying, who said that?
He, he addressed you, so yes.
Oh, okay. So as I'm walking out, he asked the police officer to walk me to my vehicle to make sure nothing happens. That is against your charter, because you're using the police officer as a personal protection to your personal vehicle. That is against your charter.
No, what, what, the council president did not say that, and actually, he's there. He, he said, see, he said, he said, he said, make sure you walk her to her car and off the, and off the lot, off the parking lot.
Say why.
He didn't say why, he just said, he did.
He said, because I don't want nothing to happen.
That's not, no, that's, I, I said that when the mayor was walked out.
No.
I said that to the mayor, but he did not say that. He, he said off the lot, and that was the end of it. But he's, he's here, he can speak for himself. Thank you.
Council President.
Hello. Thank you, Councilman Beharren. I was going to say something, but then I decided just to let it go. But since it was raised again, I just want Ms. Price to know that I never said that. I never said or insinuated that you would do anything to my car. What I said was, one, I, as you know, I don't have anything against you, I actually voted for you to be on the, you know, the Housing Authority. To this date, I think that you and I have, you know, you know, a good relationship. And so, when you were speaking out of order, I asked you to please stop talking to the audience, because other people had to talk at that time, and you would have stopped talking. I gave, you know, your second chance, you still would not stop. And so at that point, you had already received a warning, and then it was only right that the next opportunity was for you to be removed from the, the meeting. Now, I don't like removing anyone from a meeting. Before you, I tried to keep the mayor in the meeting, but she continued to talk, so she had to leave as well. So now, it has been a policy that I've discussed with the Police Department, that when someone is removed from a meeting, that they're, that they are escorted to their car and off the premises. That's something that I had talked with the city manager about, and that's something I spoke with the Chief of Police about, so that, just for the safety of everyone in the room, that individuals who are escorted off will be escorted all the way through the process. So if you thought that, you know, I insinuated that you would do something to my car, that is not what I said, but even for you to think it, I apologize, that was, that was, I never said that. But that's the history behind last week and you being removed from the meeting.
Are there any other comments from the citizens? Ms. Price, you can also go back to the YouTube and check and, and look.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, but that wasn't said. Yeah, but, but you, when you look at it, you can verify it, because, yeah. Councilwoman Jones?
Council President Ferguson, I will concur with Council President Curtis. I sat right here next to him, and I distinctly heard him say, please have the officer walk her to her car and off the property. He did not say anything about his car.
Okay.
Thank you. And the video, yeah.
And if I'm wrong, I will apologize.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? My name is Ms. Hunter, I live in Ward 1. Is it on? I don't know. Can you, can you hear me? Everyone can hear me? Okay. So, um, I don't want to keep beating a dead horse, I don't want to keep repeating what I have said before, but I stand here as a citizen of Glen Arden, who believes in giving everyone a fair chance of redemption, who knows that everyone is human, and we all make mistakes daily, right? However, when you continuously do the same things and then come and smile in the same people's faces that you drag through the mud, I'm talking to you, I'm referring to you, Mayor Cross, right now, because it still bothers me to my core, the things you have said about my daughter, and the way you did not want her to be on a youth panel, and the way you even sat at the Boys and Girls Homecoming Event, and you kind of pointed over at the bench where my daughter was, and you had a laugh, and you continuously bring other people into your personal feelings about me. I don't mention your name unless I'm talking to you. When I used to see you, you know, you would come to me and give me hugs, I don't do that anymore, because I was being fake by doing that, because you talked about me even when you were running for the office of mayor. You told people I was a troll. I have it in writing. There are people in this city now who look at me some kind of way because of whatever you said, which I could care less. They're not paying my bills, they don't pay my check, they're not doing anything for me and my children, so if they want to believe the untruths, that's fine. They show me who they are, and when people show me who they are, I deal with them accordingly. Now, I will say, we do need to come together, but it's hard to come together with someone. When you extend an olive branch to them, and where they might smile in your face, behind your back, they're saying something different. And so you never know who knows who, right? I'm well-respected, I'm well-liked, I go out of my way to help people and not hurt people. When you can go so low, and I say low, to talk about my child and question why she's involved in a positive event, I want to see more children in the City of Glen Arden come out, showcase their talent, and hear their voice. So when I, I said, when people come to Glen Arden and they want to jump in, and I'm from here and I'm from there, and I care about the youth, show me. I don't want to hear about it. But here within this city of Glen Arden, our youth needs things, you are the mayor. We need more from you. We need, if you would just humble yourself, humble yourself, and just own it, move forward, and carry out the rest of your term as the great mayor that you say you want to be. The people that are coming out and speaking, just because they're being told to come out and speak on something and you don't know the facts, I ask you to please do your research before you come and you talk, because you are making this city of Glen Arden a mock. You're making us look like a circus show. And when you don't come out regularly, or you're not speaking out, or you're not showing up, but then all of a sudden, you come because someone is asking you to come, or maybe they gave you a turkey, or maybe they gave you a gift card or something? And if I'm wrong, I take that back, that was mean. But I'm just saying, don't be so easy to be bought, or believe everything you hear. Do your research. Do your research. And do your research. And I was here, he did not make that statement. I stand for truth, I stand for honesty for all people, I'm, hey, and we got to come together. We don't need to keep going apart. We need to come to the table and come together.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter. Okay, anyone else? Citizens? Okay, well. Counselor clerk, do you see anyone else on line? The time is 8:48, and this meeting is adjourned.